But those are conditions that would be post-line, in post-mails and I'm getting questions.
Oh, and then the...
Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out like how, they gave me this, but like, how can the public be aware of whatever new stuff came in tonight on like business?
Um, I mean, we can provide it.
Do I just ask you for a link? We'll come up to other people.
We just, like, this just came to us. We, we hadn't seen this before.
You don't know what this is yet?
No, we just got it tonight.
So, um, so I'll write to you and say, hey, is this gonna be online or?
Um...
I'll just write to you and I'll say, hey, what are we gonna do about that new info? And then you tell me.
Well, you've got mine.
Well, would it go into the packet?
This might not even apply though, I don't know.
Maybe. Well, it's...
So that's, I'm just gonna write to you what to do with the newest phone. And you're gonna say to me either it doesn't apply, or it does apply, and... Yeah, maybe?
She was like, what is something?
Can I ask you guys a question? So, there's all this stuff about putting in fill into the floodplain, or, you know, building up to the soil, or putting on stilts. And that meeting that I was at, I believe was in the other day. Blake, I believe, said, and this is something else that someone else said at the DQ that you can use the cap. You can't put fill or disturb waterways or creeks or whatever so that you push water onto your neighbors. So, if this is a floodplain and you fill the floodplain, won't that push water when it comes onto neighbors?
I'm not an engineer. I mean, I'm serious. I know that, I know that, you know, y'all had Tony's ear quite a bit yesterday. That would've been a real good question.
I don't, I didn't have it, you know, yesterday. I didn't, I read it at a time where I thought I did tonight, so I didn't say it. But that's a big question. If you're filling in the floodplain, that's gonna push water.
And they would have to mitigate that, whether they did that with a structure on another purchase site to address it. You can't, um, handings free.
And how to mitigate them.
Using engineering tools, because there will be investigative practices, there's a whole long list of engineering techniques that can be used to mitigate them.
So, I suppose, so this isn't still a question of the asset? Should I ask you again?
Um, Tony, I versus a floodplain, too late to provide that. Um, so, they shouldn't be able to give any fixes to this site yet, because we don't have a site in this one, which, because they have to put one together.
Okay, so BMEs are called as...
Best Management Practices.
Okay, so I was about that. I don't know, because when I talked to the DQ with the phone, he felt like he's, for example, for wetland area. You cannot use any fill with...
Well, it's considered a wetland or not, I don't know. It's a floodplain.
I believe, I believe this side of the county is...
Well, the county side is not supposed to be...
Apparently everyone's maps are wrong, so who can trust anything?
All right, I'll trust the Lord.
Seventy thirty U.
Are you cold?
I'm very light.
Oh, then you're, you're a bit of a burn. I've never...
No.
Uh, just sitting on Broadway, you know, outside the main doors.
And I did, I, when I, when I said she was in the lobby of my locker, I was just walking, and she said my face was... Um, but I just feel like, and she did that when we were in the lower grade theater, um, and I was kind of flubbed, so I... So I did get some popcorn, so I had tea.
All right, I knew we couldn't do this in ten minutes, but maybe we're refreshed and rejuvenated and ready to go. Ms. Dow is going to hand sanitize. So she won't infect us, and that's fantastic as far as I'm concerned. But I think we can go ahead and at least read the next item on the agenda for, um, public hearing, and that is ZT eighteen dash one one dash oh five. I need to gavel's back, we're in session, sorry about that. ZT eighteen dash one one dash oh five, amusement centers. The proposed amendment to the text of the city zoning ordinance, City Code Section thirty four dash four eight oh, thirty four dash seven nine six, and thirty four dash twelve hundred, to revise the definition of amusement center and identify the zoning classifications where this use is allowed. And Mr. Haleska. Is she coming back up?
Long as it's there, well, you gotta call her. Madam Chairwoman, chairwomen, members of the commission, it's been a while since I've been up here. Uh, this is a proposed zoning text amendment to the definition to amusement center regulations. In the initiation for this, we discussed, uh, looking at the definition as well as the use matrices where these particular uses are permitted, and I do wanna, I guess I'll touch on the definition. Definition of amusement centers essentially, uh, three electronic games for which you have to pay to activate in some fashion, whether it's dropping a coin in them, or paying someone to turn them on. Um, or more than one billiard table, which you have to pay to use. Um, so that's an amusement center under our code. Um, as I show, as we show it, um, it's allowed by right in one district in the city, the highway corridor. It's allowed by special use in a bunch of other corridors that are listed in the staff report, and then not permitted in some other corridors. So, in evaluating this, and I had a really good discussion with our, um, Assistant Zoning Administrator about this, and we kind of identified, as I showed in the staff report, I got three applications of this definition. And one is sort of your, your typical restaurant that might have three or four games in the corner, and, you know, have your, your golf game, your, uh, your, your hunting game, and, uh, I don't know, some of your classic games. I don't wanna use any names for, you know, brands or anything, give anybody free advertising here on Channel Ten. But, um, and, you know, people use them while waiting or something like that, and we all, we all know what that was like growing up. Um, secondly, this definition also would cover what we would classically know as an arcade, which is, you know, just rows and rows of electronic machines of some sort, um, that are, you know, standing by themselves. Uh, that's the lone purpose of the business, uh, they don't engage in anything else, um, just, there's just the games. And then we kind of come up with a third option, which is sort of the, kind of a, um, hybrid between the two. Then you've seen the ads for these types of establishments where they're sort of oriented more towards adults. There's food, there's seating, there's also a large number of probably more modern games that maybe cost a little more, and they, they're advertising the back and forth between them. And in all of those cases, when discussing this, we're kind of, you know, trying to go back and forth, do we do by right? Do we do special use permit? Finally, we just kind of came to the conclusion that the games themselves really aren't causing any problems in any one of these types of businesses. What could potentially be causing problems is just a poorly managed business. So, we did, you know, these types of businesses were regulated a lot more in, you know, thirty years ago when they were sort of social gathering spots. Um, Missy might have remembered the arcade at Greenbrier Mall, but, um, yeah, see, we both remember it there. Um, those places are Chesapeake region. Missy and I, Missy and I went to the same high school, down in Chesapeake, you know? So, we both remember, yes, the den of inequity that was the arcade on the food court of Greenbrier Mall, um, doesn't exist anymore, so I'm not slandering them. Um, and so, they were kind of a social gathering space for teens, uh, young adults, that, um, you know, didn't have video games. Video gaming industry being what it is, these places are largely nostalgic in nature. Um, we do have one in the city, um, if you don't know where it is, I can tell you, um, but it's, so, they've kind of not be, they're no longer this kind of concern around the, the, the problems that arise when you have these types of institutions. And really, staff's opinion is that they not be highly regulated as they are. So we are suggesting that we move this to a provisional use permit, which a provisional use permit, um, you might be familiar with that. Music halls that, uh, where essentially you can walk in, fill out a form, you have permission to use this as long as you agree to the conditions that are listed in the code. And the conditions we're proposing are the same conditions that we use for music halls, which is, if you have a certain number of calls for service, we can revoke your permit. I think it's four in a calendar year. So, once you go beyond four, if you become a problem, because you're not managing your business very well, we can go in and say, take out all your machines. Um, so that's kind of an incentive to run your business the right way. But other than that, um, so, if you look through the code there, we, we advise making it a provisional use permit in most conditions. The one places where we would change that, um, we would keep special use permit is the corner district. Um, that's just, I think, partly because of traffic concerns, and I, I, the corner has some interesting things going on with, you know, just the pedestrian access along there. So I think, you know, a, a, you know, a really intense use that had this gaming component in the wrong spot could potentially cause some issues. So I think we'd want to do that at a level of review of special use permit, just to see how you'd manage in the crowds, what are your hours of operation, things like that. Um, we are proposing to strike it from the South Street corridor, and the South Street corridor being kind of a residential area that's not really, uh, it just doesn't seem like we'd ever grant one, you know, by special use permit in that zone. So I think just remove the possibility of ever doing it, um, given the character of that district, which is fairly small mixed-use district. So that's our recommendation, um, and then adding in the regulations for provisional use permit. Uh, Commissioner Stoltenberg mentioned a, uh, another section of the code that does deal with provisional use permits, Section thirty four dash one eighty-one B. Um, I just reviewed that today. I don't see anything in there. While we, we didn't include that here, we don't propose any amendments. I think we probably do, just for clarity's sake, need to go back and do revise Section one eighty-one at some point to include an up-to-date list of provisional use permits. But I think all of those rules still apply to any provisional use permit in the city. Um, so I don't think we're, we're kind of making it so you can't enforce these rules by not updating that section. But I do, it's a good catch, and we probably should've updated it just so that, you know, anyone perusing gets the cross-reference. And I'll be happy to take any questions you may have on this matter.
Can I ask what, uh, what applicants we banned? That this would, um...
So it'll impact two, uh, two existing businesses that are operating right now that are, they're not in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Um, additionally, we were, we have been approached by, um, someone interested in opening a billiards facility um, on, in, in one of the zones that is, where it's not allowed at all. And, um, we, as a staff, feel it's probably actually a really appropriate spot for it, but it just wasn't permitted. Um, so that gave rise to look at it, and once we started looking at it, we recognized that we actually are enabling two other existing businesses to, um, no longer be non-conforming, I'll put it that way.
Are they non-conforming or illegal?
They're illegal.
Okay, thank you. You know how I feel about that.
Yeah, yeah. They're illegal.
They're illegal.
Don't report on my arcades.
Uh, Mr. Haleska.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in general, I applaud this effort. Uh, I agree that arcades are okay. The, um, my understanding of the provisional use for, uh, uh, music halls was it was driven by, uh, noise ordinance violations, specifically in Belmont. Do you foresee similar noise ordinance violations from arcades and billiards?
No, no. Not from, not from the machines themselves. I mean, these are internal machines, so, um, the activity is enclosed. Um, I would point out that the text of the, that we're proposing here, the condition that you have to apply by in the provisional use permit, it's identical to the one in the music halls, and the noise ordinance is enforced by the police department. So, if someone were to operate a business under, with one of these provisional use permits that did create a noise issue, probably from just management of crowds, yeah, more than four times they got a visit, um, we could rescind it in that situation, but, uh, you know, the current illegal uses are not a cause, causing any problems now. So, um, yeah, I don't foresee any issues with that.
Do you think that most patrons of restaurants and bars on the corner drive?
No. No.
Question about South Street, um, a lovely area. What is different about South Street from the rest of the city?
Uh, so the other mixed-use districts, for the most part, and there are a couple of mixed-use districts that we did not recommend a change into, um, NCC and High Street. So I would lump South Street into that group where there's more of a, a smaller, uh, height requirement, just kind of a, uh, they're really close to residential, the South Street itself is kind of, actually has a fair amount of residential development in it, um, the residential uses in it. Um, so it was specifically crafted out of the downtown zone in light of its kind of, that character along the south side of South Street that has those homes that, um, just, you know, go down the street one after another. So, in all of those districts, um, one, there's either a residential, a pretty heavy residential component, or they back up or almost are on the same block as residential development. And so, I think for those, it was sort of like, yeah, I, I think this is probably maybe a little too intensive an allowance for those districts. Um, so High Street and NCC, we already kept it out of there. And then, I think, writing South Street to that list just because it's in line with kind of that, I wanna say, neighborhood scale mixed-use zones.
Doesn't South Street have a brewery?
It does.
It's, no, actually the brewery's just outside of the zone.
It's outside the zone.
It's like a tiny cutout for like six houses just to the west of the brewery. It's basically sponsored.
It's like, yeah, it's like, some, it's, yeah, it's all, it sits this out, as you come down south, it's on the right-hand side. And you're right, yeah, he's right, the brewery, I think, is in the Water Street District, actually.
Oh, okay. But on the same street?
Yes.
Okay.
But across, across Second.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Would it be reasonable, instead of, uh, taking the, the provisional use method, which I, I understand your thinking, but would it be reasonable to just do by right?
I think that could, if you had, if you didn't have any concern about these ever kind of being out of control in some way. Um, I come back to that third, uh, category that we kind of talked about, where, you know, I don't, I don't think those types of establishments would probably locate in any of our downtown areas because of parking. Typically, they go to, you know, underused shopping malls or, you know, strip areas where they can have a large amount of parking. Um, so, yeah, if you were to feel that, you know, this is, this is, we, we don't really even need to have these people come in and sign a piece of paper, um, they can be free to do it, and, you know, they'll be subject to running a good business like everybody else. I don't, I don't really have an objection to that. It was really just if you had any concern about, you know, the intensity of use getting to a point where we might have some, some detrimental impacts, or some people just getting out of hand.
Is there any way, so I know, like, restaurants we allow by right in a lot of places, but then we have PUPs for all-night restaurants? Um, is there any way we could break out all-night amusement centers if the worry is late night?
I think you could potentially add a condition, you, add another item in that list that we proposed to say hours of operation will be, you know, whatever, you could put the hours of operation. I mean, people don't have to ask for it, but they have to agree to that. I tend to think, you know, if we're gonna get to something where we're a little concerned about the impact, we're gonna be talking about alcohol service, and alcohol service is gonna cut off at two AM, ABC rules being what they are. So, that's the reason you don't see a whole lot of, you know, stuff from two to six.
Unless you have a private club, and then the alcohol doesn't stop, and then the noise picks up.
Yeah.
So...
But most private clubs, I believe, require special use permits in the, in the city. I know downtown it does.
Seems like we're approving everything, so I wouldn't be so sure that that wouldn't pass.
Well, me personally, I would like to see more activities of this nature. I feel like I should not have to keep driving to Richmond and Fredericksburg to go to facilities of this nature with my child. So, um, I say, whatever we can do to make this happen, let's do it.
I have some questions prior to that.
Okay.
Uh, is this, are we moving this from an essentially accessory use to say a restaurant or something to a primary use? I mean, is, is what we've got now essentially an accessory, like, you know, Dave and Buster's, right? I don't think we talk about that.
Well, are we talking, like, Dave and Buster's and, um, what's the other one for the, only for the kids? Chuck E. Cheese, yes.
See, but that's, this is a secondary use to a restaurant. This is a, this is, that's what I'm asking. Are we moving this from an accessory use to a primary use?
I think as it's worded right now, it is, I mean, it's, it's not permissible as an accessory use. It's its own component of a business, the way the definition is writ. So once you get above three machines, you are now a restaurant and you're operating an amusement center off to the side. Or if you've got two pool tables, suddenly you've gone from a restaurant to a restaurant, and that portion of your business is an amusement center, and it is, yeah.
Did you contemplate that, making this an accessory use to, so that it is something more like a family event space instead of potentially something else?
I don't know that, I mean, I guess you could, I guess you could go to an ancillary use where it's, you know, it's not the primary establishment. I, I do, I am a little worried about the, you know, a standalone arcade that is not operating, not doing food service, not doing drink service or anything, just you come in, you play games, you leave.
Oh, no, that's so boring.
And so, that, I mean, I think that's where I'm concerned, is, as I, I didn't see anywhere this is looked at possibly as, well, I call accessory ancillary.
Yeah.
Tomato, tomato, but you know what I'm talking about. I do, I guess my question is, also, what's going on that we need two AM to six AM arcades? Because my mama told me after two o'clock ain't nothing good happening.
I usually hear that. Nothing good's happening after midnight.
It gets earlier and earlier.
It does get earlier and earlier. And I do have another question. How many provisional permits in the city for bad businesses have you ever revoked?
I would have to direct that question to the zoning administrator, because they are responsible for doing it.
None. Okay. All right.
Is he the person?
The current location where the applicant is seeking a code change?
Well, I'm just talking about, we're moving these to provisional permits. Come on up here, you got, she can't, she, she's gotta get this on record, right? Please state your name.
Hi, Craig Fabio, Assistant Zoning Administrator with the city. The current location that the applicant is seeking the code change for had a music hall permit revoked.
Okay.
So if we're following the same guidelines as a music hall, why would they be...
Why would we give them a provisional for this?
That makes no sense.
It's a different entity.
Okay.
Just same place.
Same place, same services.
No, no. Different business.
Oh.
Different business, different business.
Could I get you to come up here and please speak in here so we can get this? Thank you.
This is, this is, I think what Mr. Fabio is indicating is that there wasn't, somebody operating a business in a location, they had their music hall permit revoked, and may have run into foul with some other governmental organizations.
So what he's noting is that there was one provisional permit that was revoked.
Right.
Whereas I didn't think there were any, there was at least one.
Yeah.
But this is a whole totally different...
Different, different group, running a different business.
Just same location.
Same location.
Okay, thank you.
Just the building is the same.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Can you just tell me what the deal is with the seven, why do we need seven, eight, two AM to six AM? You didn't answer that.
I don't have an answer for that.
Why do we put that in there?
Uh, because I just grabbed it from the music hall section.
Fantastic.
Let me see. Yeah, that's the, the regulation from the music hall.
Would be either allowing them till six AM with no restrictions, without the security guard restriction, or just banning them at all?
Or just not lying between two and six?
Yeah, banning them between two and six, yeah.
Or just, I mean, once alcohol sales kind of go off, I mean, unless there's no alcohol, I mean, I don't know. I just... Okay. Any other questions? No? No? Do we have an applicant?
No, this is the city.
Cities, yeah, right, 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 right. I'll open public hearing, if that's okay with you guys. This time I'd like to open public hearing on this zoning text amendment for amusement center regulations. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please come forward. There's no one signed up, but if you'd like to speak on this, please come forward, and you have three minutes, please state your name. And, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Valerie Long. Um, I would just, um, encourage you to consider, um, allowing this to be a by-right use. I don't have any, uh, interest in this professionally, other than just out of personal interest. Kind of like you said, Ms. Dow, these are, uses are very different now than they used to be. At, anytime you require a special use permit, it makes it extraordinarily more difficult, more time-consuming, extremely more expensive, a lot more uncertainty, you are not likely to get them. You'll just get lots of public opposition, because people are gonna be concerned not understanding. If you have a more administrative process that can address all of the concerns that have been expressed, you can regulate for those issues, but do it administratively outside of the special use permit process.
I think that's what's being...
It's provisional use.
On some of them here, it says it's...
Special use in the corner district.
We're changing from special use provision.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Excuse me.
Next page.
That, that's helpful, so anytime you can do that, thank you.
Thank you. Look at, we fixed the problem already.
Yay!
Woo, won tonight. Um... Any other people like to speak on this matter that is not, uh, signed up? Going once, come on. All right. One more. Just state your name and...
My name is Judy McMullin. Um, I am actually one of, an owner of an establishment that is trying to have this go through. Um, I guess what we're trying to do is overcome what used to be a music hall establishment. Um, we're trying to change the atmosphere, promote family-friendly atmosphere. We are not open until six AM. Um, although, we do, uh, serve alcohol until two. We will not be there until two either. Maybe occasionally, but not as a norm, as an operating business. I don't know. You guys seem to have had questions that I can answer, so, just...
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing, and then, you want to ask a question?
I, I do. Um, where are we talking about, if it's cogent?
It's your chance to plug it.
Preston Avenue, Preston Plaza, um, nine seventeen, Preston Plaza, behind Sticks and Mona Lisa.
Oh.
Can I state the old name?
No, I think we know. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Oh, public? Okay, please.
Craig Fabio, Belmont resident. Um, taking aside my zoning hat and my work with Mr. Jalaska on this recommendation provisional use permit, I believe that this is appropriate. It provides some means of control in a situation where there could be a bad operator. The music hall permit process is in place because of the Belmont neighborhood, because of a bad egg. If there was a provisional use permit process in place at that time, a lot of things could have been resolved much faster. The previous occupant on Preston was problematic. There was not a music hall permit as it stands today. There were issues. There were times where it could have been revoked. There were times where police were there on multiple occasions. Current regulations and the proposed regulations can protect the community. My brother lived directly behind that establishment. My mother was kept up late lots of nights. I think it is a means to provide protection for the community and the provisional use permit is inexpensive, easy to work with on a staff level, provides protection for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff? Mr. Amer, would you like to speak on this? And I will close the public hearing. Does any planning commissioner want to speak? No, just kidding. Discussion or a motion?
I have a point of information. Uh, to what extent can we edit this, uh, for example, the use matrix? Or would we have to send it back?
If you add it to a zoning matrix, uh, matrix district where it is not, you would have to send it back.
What if we made it from an S to a P?
No, that shouldn't be...
It is lowering instead of making it more intense. Where's your...
Uh, so there's, there's only one district where they're currently, well, in the proposal where there's special use. Um, as Brian mentioned, the corner district, uh, where there were concerns about traffic and parking. Uh, sorry, but I don't really recognize those concerns. I think most people who go... Pedestrian traffic because of crowds.
You have at least one business that...
In the mic. You're gonna have to learn to be Carolyn. She gonna let them know to speak in the mic, okay?
We, we, I know we have, we have at least one business there where we have, you know, questions about, you know, lines queuing out onto sidewalks. Now, luckily, it's during the lunchtime hour. So that was kind of my concern, not, not car traffic. I don't, car traffic around the corner, no, that's not.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Fourteenth Street is what it is. University is what it is. I think there was a question of crowd control. If you try to do something where you're queuing people on the sidewalk, we'd wanna say, eh, no.
I hear that. That makes sense. Um, and I, roots definitely does spill around the sidewalk. Uh, that said,
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it seems to me that this use, like we kinda said, is about as intense as restaurants, um, which are by right and aren't necessarily more likely to queue around the sidewalk, um, as long as they don't serve salads, I guess. Uh, and, uh, I can think of at least one establishment on the corner that I'm pretty sure would qualify as an amusement center under these rules. Um, I can think of a couple others. It really depends on whether they charge for, uh, never mind. I don't wanna give you any hints. You can't shut it down.
Ask this and we won't.
So I'd like to see the corner be provisional use. Um, I mean, it might make sense to institute some sort of separate rule about having queues on the sidewalk, uh, if that's a separate issue. I don't know if we can address that elsewhere in the code.
I don't think you can instruct the sidewalk anyway, so it might just be you.
Covered by that. That makes sense. Um, and I'd also suggest that we, in the commercial zoning districts, manufacturing industrial B2, B3, we might consider making it by right because the potential impacts, uh, that we might need to corral in by revoking a provisional use permit might not apply there.
I think you're wrong. I think those back up to many, many neighborhoods, which are part of some of the problem, some of the areas.
Do you have one in mind?
Yes, I do. It's my backyard, if you wanna know the truth about it.
I guess for me, I, and, and maybe in my mind, I'm, I'm, I'm in parent mode. I just don't see something like a Dave and Buster's or, um... What's the little kid's one?
Chuck E. Cheese.
Chuck E. Cheese creating...
But we're not talking about that.
Well, see, I guess that's where I'm stuck at. Can, can, can somebody clarify for me, like, who else is playing arcade games?
Well, so that was like one of the three potential things. It was that and like restaurants that just have a couple games and then...
Because if everything is inside, I'm trying to figure out, I guess I'm, I'm using my personal, in my opinion, I should say, when I go out of town and I, I frequent these establishments, you can't hear any noise before you get to the door. There's not a line outside. So I guess I just need help with somebody enlightening me on what we're talking about or what it could be, so I can be informed on this decision.
Let me give you some help.
Okay.
For those that you're talking about, I, I frequent those as well. My kid is a junkie. And we technically, we, we, I've got my card in my wallet. But it, that's an accessory use to a restaurant.
Okay.
It's not a standalone, uh, a primary use. And I think that does make a difference. I think if we're, while, while ABC license requires some food to be served with alcohol, there's gotta be a certain amount of food sales. So we know that to get a, a license, it's, 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 it's kind of a secondary use. And I think where it comes into play, um, again, just some history uh, of dealing with some of these is not necessarily, um, your kids that are the problem or the families that are the problem. It's that potential one that opens 2:00 to 6:00 and I've been out at the bar drinking all night and then I wanna go play video games till 6:00 a.m. So you can't just plan for those things that are, yeah, it sounds like a great idea. I mean, that's what I said. We're getting at Dave and Buster's because that would be awesome. But, but we have to plan for all the potential things that, that possibly could happen. And while I would probably support the change in that special use permit to provisional, I think provisional is the right way to go on these. It's just an administrative review and it gives us some cushion to be able to make sure that it doesn't backfire.
What are y'all thinking? Y'all been quiet on this?
The thing is, and this is something I learned a lot, you never know what is gonna come forth. I mean, it's... People are thinking about things that we can't even possibly think about right now. And you've gotta plan for the unknown sometimes with...
And also remember, it can be a pool hall.
That's right.
Without anything else. So it could be a bunch of pool tables, um... And so if that would change your mind, if, I, I doubt you and your kids go to a pool hall. But it could be that. That's one of the things it could be.
But we do have separate regulations, section three on pool halls, right? So kids under 16 can't go in, kids under 18 can't go in without a parent, um, a bunch of other restrictions.
It's not in the zoning code.
I'm just saying, I just want you all to know.
Yeah, not in the zoning code. Section three, yeah, just three. Not like 34.
The definition encompasses more than just the machines.
Right.
I thought it was weird, too.
When you read it.
It's confused.
Yeah.
And then we have section 34 dash 937, which says electronic gaming cafes are prohibited as an ancillary use.
And that's a different animal.
But we don't have electronic gaming cafes defined anywhere.
That's gambling.
That's gambling? Oh, I thought that was like a LAN arcade.
Mm-mm. No, 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 no.
Parents' house.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a very different animal.
Mm-hmm. So, again, that's what I'm saying is...
That's why it's good to talk about these things.
That's right.
So I'm, I'm having some difficulty because I've, I, I have played pool before and I have played arcade games before and it was fine. Yeah, it didn't change my life, but it was, you know, it was, it was okay. And I, I'm, I'm trying to think of, you know, specific legal nuisances that we can predict and prevent with, with language. And I, I can't think of any, like drunk people playing video games sounds okay.
I don't think it's the inside that's the problem for sure. And typically, that's not what it is. It's the fights that, and the, the, whatever. Again, I'm not saying these fine people are not gonna run a great establishment, but no one thought that the restaurant, the, the wonderful jazz restaurant that was gonna happen in Belmont was gonna create such a problem either. I think he's still in jail, but anyway. You know, I, I think that's why provisional permits would allow us to, just to be able to, and again, it's, we've had to revoke one. But we've had to revoke one. Listen, it only takes one, and this is why the, 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 the public right now gets frustrated. We have zoning, we have zoning laws, but if we don't have a mechanism, and I mean, this is not just city, this is county. This is everywhere. When you have zoning, you have zoning laws. People have a certain amount of thought that they have some sort of protection. Right? And so, um, without the enforcement to that, I don't even know why we're sitting up here. If you don't have some sort of enforcement or mechanism to be able to maintain some kind of peace, especially, especially if we're gonna go to a denser population. You gotta be able to, to enforce the nuisances where people say, because otherwise, people gonna move out and they don't wanna be more dense. So it's not gonna happen. But I do think that there's a lot of, because I get to hear the frustration. Why can't you do anything? Right? For 18 years, I get to hear the frustration. Why can't you do anything? Why can't you do anything? Sometimes it's just a little bit, and that's why, that's why I said, you know, changing that S to a P for provisional use permit, it gives a, it gives, it, it, it just gives a little bit of safeguard.
So can I check out my pros and cons or the two sides here, right? With the POP we get, if they get, the cops calling them four times in two months, they get booted.
Potentially.
I guess at the discretion of the zoning administrator. Is that right?
Yes.
Um, and then the cost is an administrative review that's not discretionary? Seems pretty easy-ish.
You asking about the provisional use permit process?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's literally, you fill out a form, the zoning administrator signs it. And basically, a provisional use permit is you're saying, you're agreeing to follow the rules in the code. And we have it on record. We know you're operating it. Um, and then, yeah. We do have some discretion with this calls for service because we don't know what the calls for service, you know, might be if someone has a, you know, I don't think any medical emergencies ought to count towards that.
Right.
That's reasonable.
More discussion or entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, wait, I should probably look up the thing for the motion, right?
Page five.
What's there between these two?
Oh, oh, with the following additions.
I move to recommend approval of this zoning text amendment to amend the provisional use permit regulations, section 34 dash 1170 edsec, the commercial district use matrix and the mixed use district use matrix of the code of the city of Charlottesville, as amended to amend the regulations for amusement centers and the basis that the changes would serve the interests of public convenience, general public welfare and/or good zoning practice. With the following additions and modifications, change corner district use matrix to P or provisional use. Second?
Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to offer one amendment. Good God! To change only industrial corridor on River Road and Harris Street and not the other commercial districts to by right. Like we were saying earlier, but those don't back up to residential.
Can we just keep them all provisional? So that way we have some control. Everybody can feel good and we can move forward.
You were, you were on a roll. You were on a roll.
Amending your own motion.
You wanna...
No, it's not accepted.
Well, I figured they would do that.
Okay.
That's fine.
We have a motion and a second.
Whatever.
Ms. Green, would you please call roll?
Mr. LaHondra?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Stolinsberg?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. The motion passes. Onto the next.
Well, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Can I ask the owner a question?
Sure.
I just, I'm just curious to know what's going there. Like, is this gonna be family-friendly? Should I prepare?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. I'm out of sorts. Okay. Next, ZT 18 dash 11 dash 06. Primary and linking street designation in mixed use zones. The proposed amendment to the text of the city's zoning ordinance, city code section 34 dash 541, to include any undesignated streets into the designated streets listing corrected by clerical errors and standardize the language used to identify streets. The following zoning districts and streets are included. Thanks. Appreciate this. Downtown Extended Corridor, East Market Street, First Street, Fourth Street, Elliott Avenue, Le- Levy Avenue, East Water Street, East South Street, Grave Street, Lyman Street, and City Walkway. Downtown North Corridor, Eighth Street Northeast, Fifth Street Northeast, First Street, Fourth Street Northeast, Ninth Street Northeast, Second Street Northeast, Second Street Northwest, Seventh Street Northeast, Sixth Street Northeast, Third Street Northeast, Eighth Street, Eleventh Street Northeast, Locust Avenue, Lexington Avenue, East Market Street, West Market Street, East High Street, West High Street, Tenth Street Northeast, Ninth and a Half Street Northeast, Park Street, Court Square, and Altamont Circle. Cherry Avenue Corridor, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Delavon Street, Estes Street, Grove Street, King Street, Knoll Street, Ninth Street, Sixth Street, Six and a Half Street, Seventh Street, Roosevelt Brown Boulevard, Dice Street, and Elm Street. Neighborhood Commercial Corridor, Bain Bridge, Carlton, Douglas, uh, Carlton Avenue, Douglas Avenue, Fine Jane Avenue, Garden Street, Goodman Street, Hinton Avenue, Holly Street, Lewis Street, Mari Avenue, Monachello Road, Walnut Street, Meridian Street, Jefferson Park Avenue, and Price Avenue. High Street Corridor, Eleventh Street, Willow Drive, Tenth Street Northeast, Thirteenth Street Northeast, Duke Street, and Little High. Highway Corridor, Fifth Street, Eastview Street, Monachello Avenue, Carlton Road, Hillsdale Drive, 250 bypass, Monachello Road, Reeves Street, Nassau Street, Quarry Road, and Dreward Avenue. Urban Corridor, University Avenue, Old Ivy Road, Wise Street, and 250 bypass. Central City Corridor, Eighth Street, Ninth Street, Tenth Street, Grady Avenue, Landonia Circle, and Duke Street. And Corner District, 12th Street, 12th, 12th Street, 12th and a Half Street, 13th Street, 14th Street, Jefferson Park Avenue, and Minor Court Lane. Again, I could make a Christmas Carol out of that. Are you, are Steph... I guess what?
Rare Street is not a major street.
Was it on there somewhere?
It's not, it's not included as, as, uh...
I didn't need to change anything with that.
Oh.
Yes. There wasn't a primary or linking change.
Right.
It is for a street.
Thank you. Uh, so this is a, simply an edit to 541 to bring it up to date and fix all of, or most of the staff, well, it should be all of the staff frustrations with this section. So this came forward because there was a site plan submitted in the downtown north district, which, um... district, which fronted on Tenth Street. And Tenth Street, in the downtown north section, we delineate height by what street you're fronting on. So if you front only on a primary street, you can have five stories. If you front on a linking street, or a linking and a primary, you can only have three stories. Tenth Street was not listed in either list, which leads to a lot of confusion as to how tall a building can you actually build. So in the frustration of that, while we were in the spirit of fixing some things in the code, we decided we'd go ahead and just take care of all the frustrations in this. So I literally went through the five forty-one, looked at all of the sections where there were primary and linking streets, delineated, tossed out West Main, East and West Main West, because those were taken care of in the West Main. Re-revision of that code, obviously downtown and Water Street aren't on here because all streets are primary in those districts. But the, and then I went through the map, and I literally found every frontage in every one of these zones, and wrote down a list, and went through, and edited all the way through, so found all of the omissions, there were a lot, they've been added in here. Anywhere that there was a, an existing street where this was a continuation of a name, which is several of these, and it was a primary street, they're on the primary list, otherwise they're on the linking. A lot of these are minuscule frontages here and there, but they do touch these roads, and they do lead to this confusion if somebody ever tries to develop them. We also standardized all the numbered streets, so, in any directions, so, High Street, Market Street, Water Street, all have an east or a west in front of them, because that's the way they're shown on the map. Also, all the direction, all the numbered streets have a south, or a southeast, or a southwest behind them. And then we've spelled out all of the street names, sorry, losing my voice, some of them had them abbreviated, some of them didn't. So that's that, the only other change I would note is, this section currently says the downtown, the north downtowns district, the proper name is downtown north, so we're editing that too. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
For Central City Corridor, for Tenth Street, shouldn't that be Tenth Street Northwest?
Central, Central. That might be the case. So I show it as Tenth Street Northwest in the draft. Where's it listed?
I'm looking at the...
So I've put the old section in?
I'm looking at the, this, the document that's in there.
Okay, so in the draft that you have, the first section is the section as it is, and then in the, the next one is the line section?
Thank you.
And then the last one would be the as revised, and so, Central City and the as revised, I think Tenth Street is Tenth Street Northwest. Yes?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Mr. Haleska?
Mm-hmm.
What is the determination of a primary versus a linking street?
So these were, I believe, they were designated when the codes were adopted in two thousand and three. So I'm not entirely sure what, I guess the, in looking at the design of the districts, I mean, some of them are pretty clear, you know, Cherry Avenue and Cherry Avenue Corridor. But, yeah, I guess it's the roads that have a higher functional classification tend to be primaries, versus the tinier streets tend to be linking. I'm not sure if there was any sort of hard and fast rule, I think it may have been district by district, they just went through and kinda said, this is the main road, these are the main spines that, of this district, and these are kinda the other sides of it.
But did that anything to do with, like, transportation designations through Vida? No? Not through here?
No, I doubt it.
Streets that work?
Streets that work did not change this list. It may have looked at it in some fashion, but I don't think it's, you know, streets that work, with this, we're looking at the private realm, you know, it mostly deals with setbacks. Downtown North's the only one that deals with height, that I'm aware of, but everything else it's setback range, but the, yeah, Streets at Work deals with the public realm.
My recollection is that this was an attempt to incorporate some elements of a form-based code, like product, and the primary streets were the streets on which you were focusing your desire to have more activity, and a specific sort of architectural presentation, and the linking streets were maybe less significant from the perspective of activation than, than the primaries were. That's my recollection. It was, it was not a form-based code, but it was an attempt to borrow some concepts from that.
And I would point to the downtown district where all streets are primary, was kind of, you know, example of that, even though if they're really tiny, they're still, you know, we want activation on them.
So this is really just a...
It's an edit.
A cleanup?
Yeah, anything that's been added is added because it was not listed under the current code, and it does touch these districts.
Any more questions before we open public hearing? We'll be able to change some of this with our comp plan, but...
My questions are way too unimportant.
Are you sure?
Why, why I switched to one slash two instead of a one-half legislature? We'll talk later.
Okay.
I had to pick one.
Okay, I'm gonna open public comment. At this time, I'd like to open the public comment for this zoning text amendment based off of street cleanup. I don't know how else to do that. So is there any, no one signed up? Did you read the whole thing? Just kidding.
Thank you, Ms. Green, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, Valerie Long. I think these changes, the concept makes sense. I've been involved in several projects in the downtown north zoning district, and was similarly challenged by the absence of clarity, so that's good. I would just ask that you consider deferring this to allow time for the local development community and design professionals to work with Mr. Haleska, and just go through all of these, and make sure that these are the right designations for all of these different zoning districts. It does matter for, for other things other than height, your question is very appropriate. And so I just wanna make sure that while you're fixing these, and I recognize and agree with, when you're changing one thing, let's fix it, but let's provide some opportunity for input from particularly the architectural community locally, who deals with these even more than I do, but the civil engineers and other, you know, landowners, developers, everybody who has a, an interest in these issues, I think it would be helpful for them to have an opportunity to coordinate on this. There wasn't, to my knowledge, any public outreach or engagement on this issue. So, I could be mistaken, but anyway, I support the concept, but I just wanna make sure we get it right before it's moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Mr. Emery? You've been quiet all night, I'm very surprised. This is like the fourth public hearing, and we've not heard from you yet.
No, I know, I'm just saying this because of the tremendous respect I have for the Plan Commission and for Brian Haleska, but, I mean, I feel the city has reached...
Please state your name.
I'm sorry?
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Emery, sixteen oh four East Market Street.
She doesn't know you yet.
I can't remember, it seems like you guys have met the twenty-two oh four, you know, state requirement for advertising, and if there were substantial changes to this that Mr. Haleska was to have, that would be fine, but as it is, the neighborhoods have had, you know, a chance to read the Plan Commission agenda, and I don't feel that any additional interaction with the public is required. I don't think that the development community should have a particular shot at sitting down with Mr. Haleska unless, you know, all the people in all these neighborhoods do as well, if there's gonna be some sort of special provision made. So I would encourage you guys just to vote on it, or, you know, make a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Seeing not, I will close the public hearing and open this for discussion. Or a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of this zoning text amendment to the intent and description of the mixed use districts, paragraph thirty-four dash five forty-one et sec, of the Code of the City of Charlottesville nineteen ninety, as amended on the basis that the changes would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, public, general public welfare, and/or good zoning practice.
I'd like to second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just briefly, I'd like to note that Ms. Long's point is valid, I don't think this is the time to be doing changes on designation, but I would like to review this when we redo zoning.
Say that one more time, you'd like to...
Review which streets are designated which ways, because things have changed since two thousand and three.
When do you want her to review that?
When we change zoning next year.
Got it, got it, okay. I was gonna say, you wanna add another plant, work session, and... Any further discussion? Ms. Creasy, would you call roll?
Mr. LaHondra?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Stolensberg?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye, that motion passes. Will you be joining us as a staff or citizen? Just kidding. I'm just kidding, sorry. Come on, we haven't laughed hardly at all tonight.
I could do both.
The next public hearing is ZT eighteen dash twelve dash zero seven, dwelling units clarification. The proposed amendment to the text of the city's zoning ordinance, city code section thirty-four dash six and thirty-four dash twelve hundred, to clarify language and uses which constitute dwelling units, clarify definitions for dwelling unit, dwelling multifamily, dwelling single-family attached, dwelling single-family detached, dwelling townhouse, dwelling two-family, D U A, accessory apartment, adult assisted living, bed and breakfast B and B, bed and breakfast in, boarding house, boarding, fraternity and sorority house, condominium, convent, dormitory, family, family day home, hotel slash motel, and lodging, and new definition for rooming unit and common party wall. You're up.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Craig Fabio, Assistant Zoning Administrator. Tonight's amendments are a, pardon me, are a response to a recent Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, where it was determined that a fraternity was to be counted as zero dwelling units in accordance with the way the city code is written. Staff nor the board felt that that was an appropriate understanding of the code, and we needed to provide some clarification to determine what was a dwelling unit, and it led us to a much larger change than the initial conversation of some definition changes, and we stand with the proposed codes this evening.
Any, I'll just say, we had some robust conversation in the pre-meeting about this. Some conversations, I am on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and yes, that did happen, also robust conversation there, and so, for clarity from the public, from our pre-meeting, the conversation was about, the Board of Zoning Appeals did speak to the zoning administrator and say this needs to be taken with the Planning Commission and revised. The hang-up there was specifically at that time about the definition of dwelling unit, the wording, let's see, where it says consisting of sleeping bathroom and complete kitchen facilities, the specific wording that was in question was for the exclusive use of such occupants. That is the wording that the Board of Zoning Appeals seemed to hang their hat on when deeming a fraternity house zero dwelling units, counted as zero dwelling units. So, for clarity, any questions?
Mr. Fabio, I'd just like to repeat some of the questions I asked previously, just for the public's benefit. Yes, I agree, this is a much broader approach. Can you explain the purpose in need of such a broad approach?
The point of the full change was to not end up back in this position again. We felt that a simple definition change could have provided another opportunity to, to find a space in the code where an interpretation could be made, that something could be counted likewise, and we end back up in front of this board. So a comprehensive review of our dwelling, and pieces that have been added throughout the years, and overall plan for what we felt the comprehensive plan is looking for, and what the goals are to get to this point. So, yes, much broader view, but the simple definition change left a lot of other opportunities to be right back here.
Mr. Fabio, one major concern on my mind is, we are currently in a housing crisis, and without a housing coordinator. How will this affect our current housing crisis? Does this help or hurt us?
Staff doesn't feel that it will have any impact whatsoever on the housing crisis. There were some concerns brought up in the pre-meeting from some of the folks on this dais here, but, about questions as to whether it may impact that, but staff doesn't feel that it will impact that in any means. In this particular case, I suppose it would limit the density.
Can you explain what limiting the density would do, how that would affect the housing crisis?
In a, I don't know that it will impact the housing crisis whatsoever, but in a situation where a fraternity house is counted as zero units, if you have an allowable, if you have an allowance by code for six dwelling units on that property, and the fraternity counts as zero, regardless of the number of occupants, you're adding that many extra occupants to the established allowable dwelling for that property. So you're getting bonus occupancy when a large building is counted as zero in your dwelling calculations.
Mr. Fabio, there's an additional change beyond that, see if I can get the actual language, dealing with the actual definition of a dwelling unit, which is a subject of much angst and passion here in Charlottesville. The, the change, as I understand it, my, my understanding is limited, but I hope you can bear with me. My understanding is that in general, we've gone from allowing boarding houses across the city to allowing them only in one zoning designation, is that correct?
At some point, yes. I believe they were allowed in many more locations, but that was, that was a change made in oh-three to greatly limit them, but these changes here will not make any changes to currently where they would be allowed.
Additionally, my understanding is that the development community, in their infinite creativity, have found workarounds with, with the existing code to provide boarding houses where they are forbidden through various creative means. Would that be fair to say?
It is fair to say that that has happened in the past, yes, and there are some current attempts to provide housing that staff does not feel meets the current code. In a workaround manner, as you were to, yeah, yes.
In general, I do not believe in deceptive zoning like we have, and I believe that we should be correcting those problems. Does this timing make sense, given the current housing issues?
I believe it does. I really don't believe this impacts the current housing issues. I think boarding houses may very well be a means to help with our crisis, but what we're speaking to today doesn't impact that at all. Yes, it clarifies some of the definitions, however, where they're permitted, it's not impacted at all.
I'd like to ask a question to clarify the intent. Under a creative reading of these rules, one could perhaps say that a four-bedroom apartment in the flats at West Village, let out individually by room to four lessees, could be classified as a boarding, or four rooming units, which would make it a boarding house. Was the intent to keep that remaining multifamily?
Under the proposed codes?
Yes.
The intent was that, for that to be multifamily? It wasn't until earlier today that the... It wasn't until earlier today that the possibility of that creative, but that's why we're at this board. If there is an opportunity for another creative workaround, perhaps we're not there. I work with this code every day, ten-plus years. It's a frustrating code sometimes. The best is when it's clear to both staff, the boards, and the community. Community being citizens, developers. Everyone should be able to take a look at it and understand what the allowances are.
I just had a couple of questions. Why are we considering frat houses where people live, zero dwelling units?
That was the determination that the Board of Zoning Appeals made, based on the argument that the applicant brought forth.
It was not unanimous.
The zoning administrator determined that the fraternity house would count as one dwelling unit. The applicant made argument that the code does not state that. The board voted that the zoning administrator's interpretation of the code was incorrect, thus we are here today, as I believe everyone here would want them to be counted as one. And I think the general feeling among staff and citizens is that there should be at least some acknowledgement that people are living there.
Uh, yeah. And then, too, just, just for my clarity and a better understanding, where are boarding houses prohibited in this city?
I do not have the matrix in front of me, but I believe they're only permitted in a few locations at this point.
Could I recommend that maybe, if this is something that we're passionate about, which I do believe we have had some, that we look at this zoning ordinance, I mean, if, you know, kinda talking about this, that we initiate a different zoning text amendment to take care of the concerns that you're having. But even then, to do that, we would still need to clarify what that means in these definitions. Does that make sense? I'm basing this off of some conversation that we were having at pre-meeting. I think we're trying to fix a lot of things, and there's frustration in a lot of things, but it's not, maybe this is not where we need to fix.
If we approve a limited subset of this edits, just to address the zero dwelling units concern, can we immediately initiate a new ZTA?
Aye.
Well, you don't have to initiate a new one, you can do it in pieces. So, this has been initiated, you can act on a piece tonight and act on other pieces, defer that until later. One thing you might wanna consider, I think most of the questions that came up in the pre-meeting dealt with the suggested changes to the term boarding house, as well as the new definition of rooming unit. If you carve those things out, most of the other changes, so if you look at the very first change to Section 34-6, that just right out, about as clear as you can, says we'll count certain things as one dwelling unit. The change to, in 34-1200, the change to the definition of dwelling unit, is a clarification, it gets rid of the language that the Board of Zoning Appeals got hung up on, and it conforms the language to the more standard definition that is in a lot of other zoning ordinances, including the Alamoor County zoning ordinance. So, we all recommend that modification. And then, the changes to most of the other things are just to clarify, to be a little more direct in saying, this is this type of dwelling unit, or what have you. But I think if you were interested in considering just carving out, leaving the definition of boarding house and leaving that alone for now, and also carving out the suggested new definition of rooming unit, I think those would remove a lot of the concerns right now, and you could come back and look at boarding houses in general more comprehensively.
So, are you suggesting this particular, I'm sorry, the last paragraph on bottom of Page 4, and the last paragraph on bottom of Page 5, and would we be able to then look at the matrix to determine whether that might be more appropriate?
That's right. So, I would suggest leaving the definition of boarding house as it's currently written, which starts on the bottom of Page 4 and continues to the top of Page 5, and then at the top of Page 5, there's a blue paragraph that says, "Add a new definition." You could carve that out as well, to be considered later as part of your more comprehensive look at boarding houses. But the rest you can leave as written, because now, we made some stylistic changes to the reference to boarding, fraternity houses and sorority houses are already identified as a form of boarding house. So, that was just, we're trying to tighten up the language a little bit, but the changes don't really, don't really change what those are.
So, my main issue with leaving the definitions, or with that solution, I guess, is that the definition of dormitory as is provides boarding house style accommodations, where the definition of boarding house is a building with three or more guest rooms, and then a guest room is a portion of a building hired out for use as lodging without a complete set of living accommodations, but does not include dormitory rooms located on a college or university campus or owned or operated by a college or university.
Is this a question or comment?
So, is there any way we, like, does the fact that that doesn't make any sense affect any of this, or it already doesn't make any sense, so we shouldn't care?
Is there, let's get some questions out of the public, and then let's, let's do this. Is that, what does that sound like, sound fair? Is that, good? Any questions for Mr. Fabio? I mean, is there a question there for Mr. Fabio? I know, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, how does that work? Cause I'm with you.
Okay, how does that work? Yeah, go.
Well, I said, dormitory was an existing definition that we're tweaking here. Honestly, if you're not, if you're not pleased with that definition, I think we could probably take that off the table today, especially since I'm not aware of a single dormitory within the city limits.
I was gonna ask that question.
That might be an old standoff from the older codes.
Cause I don't, there are no dormitories in the city.
I believe the new proposed, the new proposed one will also not be within the city limits?
Brandon? Will be. But that's apartments, at least until we define apartments that are individually let as boarding houses, then land with would be allowed, but I think you're right.
Are we talking about UVA? We don't have regulatory authority over them?
Yeah, sure. That's not ours.
Some things would be technically in the city limits, but they're not subject to our zoning authority, is the more precise way to say it.
So.
Yeah, you could carve out dormitory, that's not necessary at this time.
Let me make sure, I wanna clarify where we are, okay, before we open the public hearing, so the public knows what we're talking about, and make sure I know, as I think I know. Once again, we're talking about the bottom of Page 4, a proposed code language. We're talking about potentially carving out boarding house meaning, means a building or a portion thereof, no?
You're talking about leaving the definition as it currently is, so taking out all of the cross stuff.
Right, so we would do it, so I'm just talking about leaving it out.
Yep.
Leaving it out of this particular motion. Which would not, and then also, at this time, leaving out the "Add a new definition," 34-12, rooming unit, for now. I'm seeing a yes and not of a head, okay. And I'm talking about dormitory. Was there another one that we're talking about, leaving out for now?
I'm sorry, what was the one we said we wouldn't change at all, dwelling unit?
No. Boarding house, at the bottom.
Oh, boarding house, yeah, sorry.
Is that where we are? Okay. So, carving, leaving some of those as is for now, and not adding that, well, okay, let me back up. Leaving the boarding house as is, not adding the new definition as it stated, the blue, for now, for further research, and then removing dormitory altogether?
Removing the change out to dormitory.
Removing the changes, okay.
I'd also suggest we keep one change to boarding house, strike "No meals are provided to outside guests," because that kinda fits right back in the random other fraternity brothers can come in and eat a meal or use the kitchen, and then it's suddenly zero dwelling units again, because BZA is very logical.
Well, but then, all of a sudden, maybe you don't care, but all of a sudden, people are operating boarding houses with restaurants in them that are open to the public. We've had people do that with bed and breakfasts.
Right.
Which led to the last bed and breakfast code changes.
Right. Ah, love.
I would personally like to just take more time and out on the dais to go through this. I think a lot of times, we try to go through stuff up here, when we should be in our work session battling this out. To me, this is not the time or the place to do that, so I feel like.
Well, that's why I was suggesting some of these we take out, look at it again, but some of these, you're not even wanting to do the immediate fix?
No, cause I feel like it's not gonna be an immediate fix.
Okay.
And that's why leaving boarding house as it's written is the easiest excise, just take it out, the proposed changes.
So, why don't we hear from the public before we make some decisions? Cause I feel like we're there in a decision process, and we need to have a public hearing. So, is that good with everybody, and then we'll go more into discussion, cause we almost went there. This time I'll open the public comment. Anyone that'd like to speak on this topic of the zoning text amendment, please step forward, state your name, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Valerie Long. As may have been discussed during the pre-meeting, which I was not able to attend, our firm represented the landowner and applicant in question before the Board of Zoning Appeals. That decision was, I believe, four to one in our favor to overrule the zoning administrator's I also wanna clarify that the fraternity house in question has been in existence at this location for nearly 100 years, so it was not a new proposed boarding house. We're actually trying to renovate the fraternity house. It's a historic structure in an entrance, in a BAR district. We've received preliminary approval from the BAR, the changes are very well received. I think this, the discussions that you've had tonight, and as Ms. Dow indicated, there are a number of unintended consequences that can result from this change being rushed through on so, such a fast schedule. It's barely been three weeks since we had the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing. I was not aware of this change at all, other than the BZA saying, maybe we should take a fresh look at this. Next thing I know, less than a week ago, when the planning commission agenda was released to the public, is when I happened to see this, and thank goodness I did, otherwise I would have had no knowledge of it. This is a change that affects all of the important, you said it well, there's a ton of passion about definitions of dwelling unit and multifamily, there's a new definition for rooming, it changes to the accessory apartments definition, another passionately discussed issue in the city. This change warrants broad community engagement and outreach, not only to the development community. Mr. Emery's right, of course the neighborhood should be involved as well. It's a very important issue. It should not be rushed through. In my 20 years of practice, I've never seen an initiation to start a zoning text amendment occur after the draft ordinance has been prepared. I've never had the initiation occur on the consent agenda in one meeting, and then the public hearing occur just a few hours later. The reason for the initiation process is so that there can be some public input, so the staff can receive some direction from the planning commission about whether this change is warranted or not, and I've never seen that process be collapsed like that into such a compressed timeframe. So, I think this warrants a pause to give everybody the opportunity to raise all of these very good points that you all have raised tonight, several of which I'd never even thought of the intended consequences. The, and going to the substance of this issue, and this was the gist of our comments to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they agreed with, is that just because something looks and functions like a residence or a dwelling unit, doesn't mean you regulate it by density. Other examples are, this last example, an assisted living facility and a nursing home. Those are both residential structures that are not regulated by density. I'd be happy to elaborate further. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else, anyone else like to speak, as a member of the public? Please state your name.
Quick comment, Justin Schimpf. This is all very new to me, too, and I appreciate the thought this might be thought through a little more, cause it affects a lot of things, I think, broader than just the boarding house. The comment I make is, I can't imagine that's so frequent, there's a line of like boarding houses that are gonna suddenly take advantage of this density all of a sudden, that would have, this would have to go through like tonight. I can't, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like that's, is not an urgent need that would necessitate moving it through before more input could be had. Another thing, in thinking about this more broadly, I think it'd be interesting to look at the proposal that was put forward on the 808 Cherry Project, about how that was a four, dwelling, four-bedroom unit with sort of a setup of kitchens that share the same space. I think it was kind of creative, and might be a way to get some more housing density, more affordable housing in a way that doesn't require broad stroke rezoning, and doesn't really change how many bedrooms or how many people live in a particular structure, just changes what kind of kitchen they might have. So, I would encourage that to be thought about in the context of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this zoning text amendment? And I will close the public hearing, and we can now discuss. I do believe we've had some, and I can't remember, I was just asking Ms. Creasy, this has happened a couple of the times, when there was a need for clarification where there had been some, excuse me, going around things, and so.
I mean, we've, we've in the past, and it's been a while, and I'll have to dig through, and I can, and we'll have a list of where we've had initiation, and then a hearing later in the meeting. That was done pretty frequently a number of years ago. We haven't had many text amendments come in the last bit, so it hasn't been as frequent, but it has occurred.
Broadly, I miss having a housing coordinator. I like knowing things. I hope we get one soon.
I, 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 again, being on the BZA and hearing what I heard, it was more, it was, I feel more cut and dry, and clearly I was the one, but I also like ordinances that are much more clear. And while I, I do think, I do think in some cases this does make it more clear, there are things that I was unaware that we were gonna be, that was discussed to add to this, so, I'm open for what you guys think about this.
Can we defer instead of deny?
It seems to me the best fallback option is to do that really limited motion, where we only strike for exclusive use of such occupants.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
So, the problem, the reason it's zero for fraternities is cause the complete kitchen facilities are for the exclusive use of such occupants, and because that struck in the proposal, we can make a motion that only strikes that and tables the rest of the other changes, and that should solve our zero to one problem.
I would also recommend, if you do that, you consider the changes to 34-6, which just comes right out and says you count certain things as one unit. Then we don't, on that particular issue that you struggled with at the BZA, that's about as clear as anybody can make it. You can argue over the definition, but that's the thing that clears that issue up. I also do recommend that you strike that language about the exclusive use, that is causing some problems in another air, another, other areas. And I do hope that at some time soon, you'll consider changing the definition to make it look more like what the county has. You've got a lot of stuff on your plate, and it seems like a lot of things are getting postponed, but it's not urgent that you do it tonight, if you strike that language. If you strike that language about exclusive use of occupants, that will take care of the, the issue. That combined with the changes to 34-6 will take care of the adverse B Z A ruling.
I would also echo Mr. Emery's comments that we can't just take this, if, taking this back out, and I agree, but if we take this back out, it can't just be the developers and the development community, it's got to be to the neighborhoods. That's where we get the most feedback from our residents. Is that a motion?
Are there any potential adverse impacts from taking away that, that exclusive use clause? And also, if we put in that 34-6 change, sure, it's a good point, I forgot about that, doesn't that solve the problem in itself, even with the exclusive use thing? Or?
The exclusive use thing is, is yielding some, as Mr. Schimpf said, creative solutions which aren't always yielding dwelling units or accommodations for low-income people that, that have basic arrangements that we're all used to seeing. And some of them are quite odd, and quite frankly, it sort of begs a question why certain people should have to live in these bizarrely organized, creatively designed, so-called creatively designed, but bizarrely organized, living accommodations because of frailties in our definitions.
Well, I think it's more so because people just can't afford to live in a city of Charlottesville. So at some point, you've got to come up with creative uses in ways so people who are of the low-income status can still afford to be in the city. More reason is so I think we need to defer everything, sit down as a, as a commission and go through it, and then move forward. I don't think piecemealing it is going to fix it.
Let me ask this question. I think she's being very generous and nice about her definition of creative. I mean, I think if, come, come do a ride-along with me sometime and see some of the, the creative. Now, I'm not suggesting that the developers here tonight are doing that, but I, I don't think you want people to live in those situations. I mean, we.
Well, honestly, I don't, but I just feel like, where are they going to live?
Well, but I, I think we need to create a situation where it's, we're talking about equity?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, why should we have, have low-income people only living in the creative solutions?
I mean, we shouldn't, but at the same time, they can't afford to live in the upper-end solutions either. So what do we do with them? Put them outside of the city?
No, but I think we have to fix some things, and then look at the, the definitions and the things that we're talking about looking at. But again.
Maybe I'm blind, and I don't know exactly what you're talking about, or maybe y'all are being too nice, because I don't know. But I'm just saying, I feel like, if that's the case, then why are we rushing this? Why are we pushing them, why, why does it have to be decided one portion of this tonight?
Because there's some people out there, they're putting these creative solutions that are not as on the up and up as some of the people sitting here tonight that wouldn't do that.
Okay.
And I can tell you, I've seen it.
And this is going to fix that?
Well, you, I mean, there's, there's a lot that needs to be fixed in this ordinance to fix a lot of things.
That, but I just feel like, if we're going to fix it, let's fix it. Let's not piecemeal it and patch it, let's fix it.
But we can fix that part, you, do a ride-along one day.
Okay.
And we can do, but, but I think we need to, to take, I think, we need to patch this part, and then do a comprehensive look at some of the rest. That's my, but hey, I'm just one vote. And clearly, I don't mind being alone, no.
We know. One more question for clarification. So for me personally, as you can probably already tell, in my opinion, I think we need to look at this comprehensively. I said that in the pre-meeting before we moved forward with any of it. But I guess my next question, my question to that is, when are we going to look at it? Because I don't think it should be something that should be pushed down the road either. Can we squeeze it in our next work session? No?
Well, I think we're going to have to do this comprehensive plan. Our next work session is.
You guys are into February before you'd have an open, unless you added some more work sessions, which you're probably going to add anyway for comp plan stuff, so.
I know you like seeing us here every week.
I love you.
But that's what we're going to do. But not approving anything is not going to get anything approved either.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
I mean, that still leaves everything out there.
All right. Mr. Landry, you've been quiet today.
Who has?
I'm listening. No, I didn't come, I mean, I, I like the approach of doing the important things that need to be done, that we've discussed, and then coming back and looking at this as a whole. Because I'm, I feel like I need more time with the, the broader changes. I know I do.
My thinking is the same.
Well, so then the question is, what are those pared-down things? So, I mean, it seems to me, at minimum, we need 34-6, the new subparagraf, and then the choice is whether we take out the exclusive use kitchen thing, and maybe the boarding house, no meals to outside guests. And I think that would cover, all three of those would definitely cover the immediate problem. I think just the 34-6 would probably cover the immediate problem.
Wouldn't cover the meals part.
I'm, I'd like to hear our council's recommendation again, about which ones are, should be done tonight.
I, I would recommend against, if you're, if you're struggling with the boarding house component, I don't recommend doing anything with that tonight at all. I really don't recommend that tweak to the meals part, because we know from experiences with other things that that language can cause significant ripple issues. So if, if you're not comfortable dealing with boarding houses, or changing the definition, I would say just leave that alone tonight. I encourage you to do that. I do agree that if, if you're interested in dealing with the adverse B Z A ruling, then 34-6, the new subsection J, is the clearest way to deal with that. And I do agree that the, that language in the current definition of dwelling unit, which is, you have in front of you, it just doesn't, it, it doesn't include any of the blue language that's, that's additional. The language there that is most often creating problems for staff is the phrase, kitchen facilities for the exclusive use of such occupants. The minimum change that would take care of the problem that's creating a lot of problems right now, day to day, if you just deleted the reference to the words "for the exclusive use of such occupants," that would eliminate a lot of the problems that have been going on for a while. So if you did that alone, if that was the only change you made to the current definition of dwelling unit, and you combine that with 34-6J, that would take care of the things that staff is recommending as being urgent. A lot of the other tweaks to the definitions of multifamily dwelling, or different types of dwellings, are just trying to make them simpler. You know, instead of saying a building designed or arranged to contain, just simple, a building that contains three or more dwelling units is a multifamily dwelling. But if you like to look at those more comprehensively, those are just stylistic changes, they are not anything that you need to get into tonight, those can wait.
Good. So I heard two things that we should do, and Lyle can put it in a motion.
34-6 I got clearly, the, the other one kind of slipped away from me.
The other one that was suggested was to take the current definition of dwelling unit, and the only change that would be made, or recommended to be made tonight, would be to strike out the words "for the exclusive use of such occupants."
Working that into a motion.
Chair, I believe I have a motion.
Please.
I move to recommend approval of this zoning text amendment to amend and reordain 34-6 at sec, that's probably Latin, and portions of 34-1200, which I will state shortly, on the basis that the changes will, would serve the interests of public necessity, general public welfare, and good zoning practice, not convenience. The specific change I want to make is striking for the exclusive use of such occupants from that section.
And adding subsection J to 34-6?
Yes, that was the first part.
A second.
We have a motion and a second.
I've got a question. Does that mean that we're not adjusting anything else, so we're only accepting that change? I didn't hear that.
That's for, for tonight.
Right, but I didn't hear that in the motion.
Do we need to make a motion to continue working on the remainder?
You can do, after you deal with this motion, you can either make a motion or agree by consensus how you'd like to revisit the other things at a later time.
I hadn't forgotten that, I think we still need to do that. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion about that motion and second, before we move into potential next steps? Ms. Creasy, we call roll.
Mr. Landry?
Aye.
Mr. Sully Yates?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Stolinsberg?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye, and motion passes. The second thing on the table is the remainder of kind of housekeeping on these proposed code changes, which would just then be to 34-1200. And so, from my understanding, is it the recommendation that staff bring this forward to a work session at the earliest convenience, so that we can discuss these further during that time? And is there anything else you'd like to see with that? Would you like to see the matrix where the board, boarding house?
Tania, I sent you an email with all those.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we add the boarding house?
Matrix?
Use matrix to the DTA?
Yes.
So that can be considered as part of the.
We would have to advertise, that hasn't been advertised as part of the rest of this, but what I'd suggest is that at the work session where you work on the definitions and clarify in your own minds what those words are, and what the definitions say the different types of residences are, then simultaneously with bringing back those edits, we can advertise a change to the matrix, and you can identify where you'd like these things to be put.
Good.
Those things can go hand in hand.
Sounds wonderful. I'd suggest, too, that there are many locations, if you just type in, that, there's industry, not industry standards, but I mean, again, I say this till I'm blue in the face, we are not inventing the wheel. That wheel has been rolling throughout many other localities across the state. And I would suggest that we look at some of these and maybe research, things are working.
What am I typing in? You said type in, type in what?
Oh, I'm going to give you a link to just multiple definitions of dwelling unit, which, anyway, you'll get the idea, and then you can look at other definitions or whatever. But there's, there's plenty of things out there that we don't have to invent this wheel every time. Take a look at, see what we think works for us, or combine two that works for us. So do I need a, by voice acclamation, all in favor of us taking a look at a work session 34-1200, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Creasy, is that all you need for that?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. That ends the public hearing portion of our meeting. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We now have two other action items. One, really.
And it's not really action.
It's not really action items? We have a preliminary discussion on Bellevue Pump Station P U D.
Time is thirsty. All right, Matt Alpley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. So, Planning Commission, tonight, you have kind of a preliminary discussion on a S U P application that was submitted to our office, that is, it's not a complete application, it is still going through the process, but we wanted to give you an opportunity to look at this information and provide the applicant some feedback as the process gets started. What's being proposed is a private sanitary pump station, which is allowed through an S U P in the residential zone districts. This would be part of the Bellevue, also known as Azalea Cottage's subdivision. The S U P, again, is not for density, not for the subdivision. The S U P is for private sanitary pump station. So where this subdivision is at, they cannot tie into the city's gravity-fed system. They do not abut any of the sewer lines. The closest gravity-fed would be to the south of the proposed property, down near Azalea Park, which would require easements through neighboring properties to tie into the system. What they're proposing would be collect the sanitary sewage from within the development, which would be at the bottom of the site, and then pump it into the city sewer system. So this is just a chance for y'all to get familiar, ask some questions, but also to provide the applicant some feedback, to provide them things you would like to see when this comes forward for a public hearing. There's, like I said, this is not a complete application. Tomorrow night, they're having their community engagement meeting down, down with the Frye Spring Neighborhood Association. They're doing some other testing on site. We have not said this is a full application, so I don't anticipate this coming back before this body for a public hearing, February, March, probably the earliest. But this is a chance for you to speak directly to the applicant, to say things you're concerned about. In the report, we laid out things that we're looking at. This is going to be very, it's very, utilities is very involved in this, as far as things they want to see in the application, but this is also a chance for y'all to let the applicant know concerns, and maybe some ways to mitigate those concerns. So with that, I'll take any questions, and then we'll open up to discussion, not really a presentation or anything, but just, again, preliminary discussion, become familiar with the project.
And will we have the opportunity to ask the applicant questions about what is being proposed?
Yes, I mean, you're, you're having a preliminary discussion. If you want to have the applicant come up, that's, that's fine.
Thank you.
I have a question. So if this is not approved, how are they going to connect, how are they going to get the, I guess, the waste out of the?
So, to do any development, you have to have sanitary systems, so you have to connect.
Right.
They, they are connected. I don't, I don't want you to think the, you know, they're completely separate, but what, what I don't want Planning Commission and the public to confuse about, it's not, the S U P is not for this development. In theory, a developer could get the, he could get the easements, tie into gravity-fed. If he did that, the rest of it, there's no S U P, the rest of it's by right, it wouldn't come before this body outside of some subdivision review. So that, that's the only thing, you, you can think of it in, in connection to the subdivision, but the S U P shouldn't be looked at as this S U P for this 30-plus unit development. The S U P is for the pump station.
Right, I'm just curious, I mean, I have no bearings on the 30-unit development. I'm just saying, if this is, if the S U P for the sub-pump is not approved.
The developer would then have to look at other options.
Do the easements?
They would have to look at, for securing those easements. I don't want to speak to what would happen to the development as far as, from the city standard side, you have to have sanitary.
Right.
So they're going this option, that option could be denied by city council. So, they're going this option, that option could be denied by city council, I don't, I'm not going to say that would, what that would do to the development, but they just have to come back and say we have sanitary.
How much land would this take up?
So it's on attachment D in your packet. It's not very big, I mean, you're looking at a small, I don't have my scale with me, but I'm sure the applicant can give you an exact answer, but smaller than the size of a typical lot in the city.
Ms. Alpley, can you quantify the relative cost savings of doing a pumping station versus purchasing an easement? Is this a cheap thing, is this expensive, what is this?
I think it depends on if you're the person owning the land that they come to you for an easement, the value of that easement goes up. I don't know the cost of constructing a pump station, but just in looking at this, I would think it'd be less than getting the easements if you're not pursuing the easements because gravity-fed would be easier.
And do we know what this looks like above grade? Was anything submitted to elevations or anything fencing around it, how it would be secured?
Nothing was submitted, they're talking about it being underground, but this is a good opportunity in this, if that's things y'all would need going forward, you know, for a public hearing to be able to see, that's kind of, too, the feedback, we as staff want to hear, too, is what, things you would want to see to better make a recommendation. So if elevations, you know, certainly something we can ask for.
And then another question, how, so I believe this is the first pump station, lift station that, if the city did have to take care of it, do they have experience taking care of something like this?
So that is a concern of utilities, they have asked for, we have not received, but examples of this scale of a pump station and how that's been handled in other communities, so we're waiting on that information. That is correct, we don't have any examples in the city, we have a few small, like individual homes where they have to pump their sewage up with a small pump directly on the home into our system, but nothing at this scale, so that is definitely information we are waiting so that we, during our review.
And would the city be evaluating the quality, the construction of the pump station to know or have the opportunity to make input into how it's constructed and what it's constructed of in case it does fall into the city to take care of it?
I don't know to what detail, I mean, we're trying to gather some of the information of what it would be. That would be a good thing, you know, to inquire about is what standards it's going to be built to, and I think that's too why we're asking for some examples of other ones, how they've been built, how they've been maintained, how they held up over the years.
And utilities, under our utilities chapter of the code, they do need to obtain some construction plans and information because they're not supposed to allow connections to the city's system if those connections would not be safe. So they will, they are looking at, they're working with the applicant to determine what information will be needed for them to be able to make that, to draw that conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
So, in addition to the ability of the utility to maintain the pump station in the event of a failure of the HOA, is there any recourse to get monetary compensation for that maintenance from the homeowners themselves with a lien on the property or just the HOA that's bankrupted?
Well, they've talked about in the HOA as to having a reserve to make sure they have money to maintain it. It's a little bit uncharted territory, so the fear, in just the conversations we've had with the applicant in utilities, is the fear of what happens if the HOA fails and people are calling the city, thirty-plus homes are calling the city saying, "We need sanitary." We're not sure, I mean, that's kind of the conversation we're starting out, what happens? What kind of securities do we have as a city to make sure that these people always have sanitary?
What also happens when, in thirty years, that HOA is defunct, which happens a whole lot with HOAs over a period of time, so, and then that's when it's going to start failing, so what happens then? So is this something that the city's just going to have to take over?
That's, you know, that's the fear, that's utilities' fear, is having to take over.
I think it's a valid fear.
And so that's, you know, as you're, as the Planning Commission, these are good things to point out to the applicant, we're looking for what kind of securities that this is not going to be taken over, that this would be, you know, be able to be maintained for years and years. So that's, I think, good direction to be able to give the applicant as they're working to finish up their application material to move this forward.
Question, I don't know how much muscle we have in here to solve problems, it seems like we have a pretty clear public interest in there not being failures and problems and risks and offsite impacts, can the city just fix this?
Fix?
A sewage connection, seems like we do sewage connections all the time.
I mean, you're asking them to give up easements.
We're not going to condemn property for a private development.
Can't or won't?
I am guessing that that would be a really tough sell right now. I think typically the service line to a house and a pump that might be associated with that is on private property, and the rule is that the private landowner maintains the facilities that are on that private land, the city maintains the connection to the main in a public street.
Usually from cleanout to main.
Yeah, so, most pumps and related service, what they call service lines to a residence are actually the responsibility of each individual lot owner to maintain. So it's, it's a very unusual situation, lot, there are a handful of locations in the city where you can't obtain a gravity-fed connection to a main that's close by in a public street, so there are some lines across private property. They should have easements, they're not favored because when they do fail, it's very difficult to get the private landowners to maintain them, but it's not unheard of.
Why would the private property have to maintain those lines? All they have to do is provide the land to dig up.
Because they're, they are getting sewage from their homes to the public main in a public street.
But, I've been very confused by these drawings, so maybe you can clarify with me, where would that, for this development, which I can see is, how many lots? How many, how many residents?
So, there existing eighty, this is the eighty-one lots.
A hundred and seven lots drained to the sanitary system?
But didn't they want to change it to a different number of lots?
Thirty-six will be developed as single-family homes, but their, the S U P they're applying for would be above that. Not saying this is up to forty, but that's not necessarily for the... That's not necessarily for the ones within the, in the development, there's also some larger lots that back up to it, that would become, if the subdivision went in, pump station was approved, you would have some lots, some larger lots that could be subdivided that are not part of this Bellevue, that could then tie, that couldn't tie into gravity-fed but could tie into the private.
And so, this is my question, let's just go here, so you're telling me that this gravity-fed sewer is going to be in the backyards of five of those houses? And that's where I was confused. Is that right?
I believe so.
You have on the south?
We're going to put those in the corner housing?
So, it's not the three there, that looks actually like they're, a B and P for their drainage on the southeastern side, the southwestern side is the pump station.
I can't read. Underground detention, okay. So only two houses get, or one, one house gets this underground detention.
And it's actually on the property too, because it can't be on a standalone lot. So your house comes with the pump station.
An amenity.
I want y'all to remember that we zone, what we zone is the land, not the person standing in front of us.
Again, no action tonight, no, this is putting this information in front of y'all, getting a chance to, you know, ask questions and see what kind of additional information you might want to see at a public hearing.
Y'all couldn't say no? Y'all just said, "Go to Planning Commission, see what they say?"
Go ask your dad.
Go ask your dad!
No, it's, 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 it's a special, it's called a facility utility in the matrix, and under that is pump station, so they can apply for special.
Should we add this to our list of matrix stuff that we need to look at?
Well, you can, but the bottom line is that the land left to be developed in the city can be a challenge, and it can be a challenge sometimes to get your sewer to, to feed by gravity to the nearest public main. And so, you, you know, the question is, if you want to look at your zoning ordinance going forward, how do you deal with that situation?
How many of these, how much, how many of these private pump stations we have in the city?
None, but we have, we do have some, what they call private mains that cross multiple private lots, and it can be very challenging because to get sewer from your home to a public main is typically the private landowner's responsibility to maintain the lines that are moving their sewer across private property into a main. So, it's a different type of facility, but it's doing the same thing, it's moving sewage from your private home across other lots.
Wait a second, is that in our ordinance, that requirement for the private owner to maintain that?
In the utilities chapter.
So that's in our ordinance? Maybe that's where we need to start, because that's insane, why wouldn't it be the person who's not the private landowner?
That's just...
That doesn't make any sense.
Your, whatever carries your sewer from your sewerage, from your toilet out to the public main in the public street, that's your responsibility to maintain.
I understand that, but I shouldn't have to...
But if you didn't have the public main right in front of your house, to get it to a public main, you and the other private property owners that share that line across a private property, that's, that's your facility.
I see what you're saying.
So why wouldn't the liability fall back on the poor guy who got the lot with the pump station on it? His, their house has the pump station on their lot.
So that, that's, yeah, I mean, that's a part of the code too, that you, gets into the subdivision order, this has been fun. You can't create a lot, it has, it has to be a house in that lot, now there can be an easement for the pump station, so, and, yeah, I mean, that person whoever buys that house is, needs to do their research because they're taking on something they don't really know they have, even though there could be an easement that says this is the responsibility of the HOA.
They can't do an ADU back there because you can't build on top of it.
I guess this is not surprising to me because everywhere else, this is how people build, like, prime example in Upper Marlboro, Maryland, in Sierra Estates, every house has a sub-pump. If that line breaks and it backs up, ask my sister, she's your favorite.
And we do have a few homes, there are some houses in the city that have, again, an individual pump, you know, so it's a smaller scale because they are down from the gravity and they feed it up, this is just larger scale.
So can you point out on this, I have, I have, I'm looking at this till I'm blue in the face, and I don't know, but can you tell me where the nearest main line would be to the sub?
So the green, this is the only diagram that makes any sense to us, so.
That's the only, I've got it, I can't get it.
Just that green line one, Montevista. So here's the pump station.
Yeah, yeah, I know that.
And it's going up the hill to this, to the line in Montevista.
But where's the sewer, so that's the main?
Ah, here we go, I've been looking for this map, I hadn't been wanting to go there. Is that right?
She's found it.
Yeah, so again, here's Montevista, there's the sanitary sewer, here's the pump station going uphill to it.
And it's only going to be that one pump station for all of the?
Because it's all flowing down to it.
And where's the other, other main that could potentially be used? For, if you're talking about gravity? It would be further down Montevista, there's a sewer easement that cuts across in front of...
Show me.
Well, it's not on this because it's way outside the project scope, because they're not trying to tie into it. On that other one, it might be, let me see. I don't think it's showing up on here, but I think somewhere in here, there's a trunk going through, because there's some easements, so you'd have to come down and tie into it somewhere down here.
Got you.
Can I ask why thirty individual pumps wouldn't be feasible here? Is it because it's such a, looks like it's about twenty to thirty feet up to Montevista, so you only want to do it once?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just the gathering of all. That might be a good question for the engineer, just on why this makes sense.
So I've done a little poking around online at lift stations and, and looked at some presentations by Dewberry, and there's clearly a range of how you build a pump station, and you can build it inexpensively and with galvanized steel elements and just concrete, no liners, and, you know, then it becomes a maintenance issue twenty, thirty years, or you can build it better with liners and stainless steel devices and ladders, and so, I would think it'd be in the city's best interests to, to sort of, I mean, we don't know how to build a pump station, so wouldn't the city want to help us then negotiate, or not negotiate, but come up with the terms for how an S U P could be given by then making, building that into the requirements of what the level of construction should be, what the maintenance should be, how to monitor the maintenance that the HOA is taking, taking responsibility for, what other securities would the city want to have to make sure that they aren't going to be saddled with something they don't want?
Certainly, and so we're, staff is definitely, this is more in utilities' field of expertise, relying on utilities to provide a lot of this, that kind of information, and so I think that'll be very helpful for Planning Commission when, as they do their analysis, we just want to make sure there's other things too that if y'all, as a body, want to see, that we're getting in front of the ball, so that, you know, that some of these impacts that are in the report, you know, noise, smell, are those, you know, those type of things that they're a concern, are there some ways to improve that? Again, it's going to, a lot of it's going to be utilities leading the charge on this.
But it can be done, I mean, it's done all the time, Northern Virginia developments, subdivisions, they do it all the time, it's a common thing, it's just the city's looking for the, some level, some level of security to make sure it's done well and right, and that in the event we do have to take it over, it's with the least amount of difficulty. And if, that means hiring a third-party peer review to look at... And if, that means hiring a third-party peer review to, to look at the design, or make sure that the city's getting what they want. I, I don't know what, but it just seems to me that we need, we, as you said, we need guidance from the city to see how the utilities, um, what kind of security they want to know that we're, that, that, this is something that if we had to take it over, um, uh, it could be done.
I guess my kind of question to that too, though, if, when the application's complete, and it's going through the review process by utilities, and utilities reviews it and provides a few guidelines, what I'm up here tonight too, trying to get is making sure that hurting the cats on staff's end to get the information to planning commission and city council in a way that, one, they understand, but one, they're getting the information they want, um, to ba-, to make a best informed decision. And so it's kind of, uh, leave no, no stone unturned. I think, I think there's a lot of things in here that are very, make a lot of sense, it's going to be utility-driven, but this is the opportunity to think, are we missing something too?
How do we know what we're missing? I mean, we don't know the utility information, or you, how this is all, I, I don't, we don't even know the questions to ask.
Well, I guess, see, this one beginning off, if utili-, if the, comes to a public hearing and utili-, and the report has utilities fine with it, is planning commission gonna be like, okay, utility says they're fine, or is it gonna be, why are they fine with it?
Well, the other thing is, if you all, you all may want to ask Matt to ask certain questions of utilities. So, things you normally would be interested in from a zoning perspective, it, is it noisy? Is it smelly? Um, you know, how often? Does it cycle on, you know, things that are sort of, um, impacts on nearby properties, as opposed to some of the more technical requirements of, is it safe for it to connect to the city system? That's going to be a utilities call, and they will have responsibility to recommend conditions or, or, or specifications for the system in that regard. But if you could help Matt, if, if you want to know, if, if I'm living in one of these houses on the same lot, how's, how's this pump station going to impact my quality of life as a, um?
But I suspect those questions are built into, uh, it's a different question. Can it be built and not smell? Then, is what's being proposed be, gonna be built and not smell?
Well, the, both of those would, utilities hopefully could give you some information about that, if, if aroma is, you know, something you want to inquire into.
Well, I think that's super important.
Right.
And noise-wise as well, because my neighbor probably doesn't want to hear my sub pump going off every two hours.
I can't even imagine there's not an impact on, especially on the house where the whole thing's in the backyard. It seems.
Well, can we talk to the, the applicant?
Yeah, 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 I mean, I, I, I.
And just kind of see what they're thinking about the?
I'm gonna tell you what I'd like from staff. I'd like for y'all to research other localities and bring that and say, these are o-, these are options out there for other localities, and what have other localities done, and how have they regulated, and what did they do, and what are the, I mean, if, if this is done, give us some guidance and some starting points, don't just, I, I feel like I'm being.
So we are at a preliminary discussion, we don't have a full application yet. We felt it important to bring this early rather than at the public hearing for the first time. There's a lot of interest in this project in general, so we're still in the preliminary, so it's okay, just throw it all out.
But do you want to know what I'm looking for, I mean, I, I don't know. What, what are the past, I mean, is there other SUPs throughout the state of Virginia, if we want to go that way? Where people have done this, and what are, what are the impacts that they found?
No, I mean, that's, that's good, that's good guidance that we're looking for.
And certainly interested in, in what will you see, uh, above ground, um, if anything?
And how are these easements and main, the main, maintenance of the easements?
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, they've got to have an easement for just their own HOA maintenance people to get to it, to, to service it and to maintain it. So that same easement would then somehow legally have to transfer to the city if the city had to take over its maintenance.
And the concern, I would like to know, I, I'd like to know in that sense, what are the other options other than this HOA? Again, HOAs all the time, after about twenty or thirty years, they're gone, and then you've got the people that have been there for those twenty, thirty years that remember the HOA, that now there's not an HOA, now what, what recourse do we have?
Yeah, I'm particularly interested, I care about the impacts, like everyone said, but in the recourse that the city has to financially recover the costs if we have to step in and take over this, um, because there's a long history of building out single-family subdivisions, the developer builds the road or whatever, whatever infrastructure, and then it's incumbent on the city to maintain it. Um, and in this case, the HOA will technically maintain it, but if they flop, we seem to have no way to recover it, except maybe a reserve fund. Um, I'd be interested in any way we can get that money back, even if it's charging one-thirty of the cost as part of everyone's utility bill, um, and whether that might require any changes to city code in order to enforce those.
Just aesthetically, I really don't like the idea of this pump station. Um, my, my concern is that we've built a pretty great gravity-fed sewer system, I'd like to use it. Um, I'd like a, a clear idea of how we could just do it normal, like we've done for, for the rest of the city. If it costs us a little bit of money versus, you know, a long-term, serious risk, I'd like to seriously consider it.
Won't the sub pump, I'm, and I'm just asking for clarification, but won't it feed into, won't it eventually feed into the zero-gravity system anyway?
Yes.
Like, it has to release somewhere?
Yes.
It's just that the way that the property is set up, it can't get a direct line, right? Right, am I understanding that correctly? I don't have a big issue with the sub pump, I just have an issue with who's gonna fix it? Because it's not, uh, it, when, it will break down, it is man-made, and when it does, who's covering that cost? Because that is not a cheap fix.
And then it, straight uphill from the creek, so if it's leaches and fails, it's going straight into the creek, right?
No, it's going in your yard.
Well, I mean, it's de-, well, I mean, I was trying to look at this.
If it fails, it's in that drainage swell going down.
Down, down to the creek.
Down creek, yeah.
Or back in your house. All right. I think gravity's gonna pull it down to the creek.
It wouldn't be this development house.
But it's gonna go in the creek.
Houses farther down, you know.
You want to hear it from my applicant?
Yeah, just, um, give him the opportunity to, to maybe introduce the project to us and the kinds of things that, uh, he's thinking about, and, um, and hearing our concerns, what his response might be.
Justin Shimp, engineer for the project. I'm just really here to answer questions about a few that have broadly come up. So one is the, this is actually, maybe in the last twenty years, this kind of HOA issue has come up because of the stormwater stuff, right? So we actually, all these HOAs, even if you had, if you had all gravity sewer, you have to have an HOA to maintain your stormwater management facilities, and you have to have reserve funds set aside to replace those. So the ones, we've, we've done some that have like targets of three or four hundred thousand dollars reserves in twenty years. So that, that's why your HOA fees are high in this neighborhood, because you've got to pay for your stormwater that, you know, you create the impact of, and you've got to pay to maintain that. So there's sort of a model built already for this type of thing in the HOA. The other thing, uh, that happened, so I, Nelson, at Wintergreen, they have a, a fifteen pump stations, kind of similar scale of this, as you can imagine there, right, you're going up and down all over the place. And so these are, and there are common many other places too, absolutely. Uh, in fact, in some places, uh, some utility companies prefer to use the individual pump stations over the, the gravity systems. They're not prone to collecting runoff, right? Remember there was a big, uh, study the city had to do, or RWSA did, about removing groundwater runoff from the RWSA system? They, you know, it's, they can get twenty or thirty percent of just runoff into those. So the pump can fix that, but in this particular case, rather than having, you know, thirty individual pumps, that's sort of, somebody has to maintain all that on, you know, case-by-case basis, so it was better to have one single pump H2 to maintain it. But what's done in, um, Nelson, to answer your question, uh, Roy, was that you pay, if you're on a pump station system, you have a special assessment to your rate. So if I, if I'm, if I had to have a pump, I pay like an extra, I don't know, fifty dollars a year, something like that, as a, as a fee. And so that, if there's maintenance done to that, it can be recovered. So for example, if there was a, uh, I can't imagine this couldn't be done, I would ask the city's staff, when, but let's say, for some reason, this, the, this was HOA setup, and there was a problem thirty years from now, and it had to be taken over. I think that, since I see it everywhere else, the city would have every right to establish a special district for all these houses, and say, on your sewer bill, because you're special, you have this pump station, you pay an extra fifty bucks a month, or whatever the, whatever the correct cost of recovery is, and that would just go back to pay the city back for any expenses. So, I imagine that would be the, the way you'd handle it if the worst came to be, but we would imagine that, you know, because the HOAs, all of them now have the situation of stormwater, there has to be sort of a concept of reserve, and then usually there's a professional maintenance company that runs all those HOAs. So it's not quite as bad as it was twenty, thirty years ago. You had just, you know, yeah, poorly set up and poorly run and these problems, so. That's what we see happening, I think it will end up, we're gonna push to put it underground, so you would hear it if you stood on top of it, a little buzz of the pumps, but you wouldn't hear it from, you know, thirty feet away. Um, and it would have a little, uh, generator attached to it, that would be running off the city gas system, and it would probably sit in like a little doghouse, so it would look kind of like a doghouse, it would be a big doghouse, yay tall, in your backyard. And that would be with the generator and the control housing. And we have to see, the, the city staff had said, well, look at that, we may want to see above-ground setup. They do have just given us sort of a list of criteria they want as a minimum to start with. And then I think that, you know, some of the other questions about, other examples where other SUPs have been, things like that would be good to look at, but they've given us already kind of technical criteria of, hey, here's what we want. And even though, I know, there's no pumps that they maintain right now, the staff, the utilities department is very familiar with them. Where they come, I, I can't know where the current fellow, uh, Roy came from, but he's well-versed in the pump. So, there seems to be a pretty, uh, high level of comfort to them about how it should be designed, and they've given us that first step, and then we're doing, we're doing a, you know, a company out of Lynchburg, Hurt and Profits, big, uh, engineering company, doing a, the study for it in a, in preliminary design to turn it over to utilities.
Yeah, I noticed that you have, um, this underground stormwater retention devices, um, next to the sump on both sides of the property, you got six of them. And so they have, they are also, the HOA is going to be maintaining those, and, and, uh, that's part of the, um, the development and the structure for.
That's correct, yeah, basically, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a reserve assessment done by an engineer who should work for these kind of HOA companies, and they essentially establish a replacement lifetime, you know, they make it, you know, so if it's fifty years, I mean, a factual, say, we'll make it twenty-five. In twenty-five years, you should have saved enough money to replace that, is basically, basically the, the program.
So that's also going to be something that the city would take over if the H, something happened to the HOA?
Uh, you know, the way, the way most of these stormwater agreements are, it says it shall never be the city's responsibility that, um, if, you know, if, in like an Al-, I'm more familiar with Albemarle, their, their requirement says basically they can take you to court if you don't pay to maintain your stormwater, and, uh, it would apply to everybody in the subdivision, so in theory, you know.
And we would.
Yeah, a, a day could come when effectively, if you don't maintain it, the city, or the county city would file a lien against every property owner, because.
Forty, forty-nine of them?
Yeah, because a stormwater agreement is recorded with the, the site plan that binds all the homeowners to that maintenance. And I think we'd have a similar thing with the, I think we will have a similar agreement with the pump that binds everybody to its maintenance.
I'll say the individual pumps then, because I don't want to have to pay because you messed up the pump.
I think it's a, the idea would be that as a, as a community, it's going to be much less expensive for everybody if you maintain one. In theory, you, you know, if somebody had very light usage and was lucky, you have your own pump, and it never fails. But six of your neighbors may have to have them replaced, and that, you know, so that cost adds up to the community as a whole more than one. It, it, it does bring into an issue of what your neighbor tosses into the sewer they're not supposed to, becomes your problem. But there's generally, generally restrictions, there'll, there'll be some, you know, guidance documents in the HOA, like, you know, you do not toss diapers down the toilet and things like that.
So it's economies of scale versus tragedy of the commons?
Uh, yeah, I guess that's right.
And when the s-, county puts liens on houses for stormwater violations, does that include cost of enforcement?
I don't, yeah, I don't know about that. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't happen often, I, I am sure it's, I'm sure it has happened. It doesn't happen often, none of my projects ever had that come to be.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it, yeah, it's, I, you know, this, in thirty years from now, we have these, all these stormwater systems that are kind of, you know, a new thing relative to that time we're in, so that may be an issue. And in fact, I would say the pump station's probably much less of an issue, that's going to cost a third of the underground stormwater retention well.
And t-, and tell us something about odor, um, a- and would you be able to smell, even if you're standing on top of it, um, this pump station?
Maybe if you were on top of it, um, trying to think of examples. The, like, it depends on, the, the key, of course, is to have frequent enough cycling, right? You want it to basically, the sewer to come in, sit there for three minutes and leave, then you don't get to that sort of issue. So, I might, I, I will defer to our guys designing that, I'll, I'll look into that. And they, they should have some statistics on that, you know, measurements. I know, I did a pump station in Louisa, for an apartment complex, that was for two hundred units, so it was larger. But I mean, that, you don't smell at all walking around it, but, you know, it's, that's just one, but they, they'll have lots of experience with that.
I have a question, and, and just bear with me for a second. Did we not just see this where we took and combined lots or something?
This was a plan? Yeah, I was here two or three months ago.
And, and what did we do with it?
We said no.
Yeah, we said it, it was not just a revision of lot lines, it, it was a, a new subdivision.
Okay, so it's gone back, and now we got a new subdivision, and now we got less lots than the bigger lots?
No, it's not a new subdivision, it's, it, we're, he.
Revision, revi-, I'm revising the plan.
Can you help me with that?
Oh, I'll fill in. So, this, the subdivision came before planning commission with some questions, so s-, the planning commission is the reviewing body for subdivisions.
Right.
These lots, uh, when this, it came before you, the lots were platted in the twenties.
Right.
And the, there were some questions staff couldn't answer, uh, that needed planning commission to answer. Stat-, planning commission did, that there was a major subdivision, um, it was not a boundary line adjustment.
Right.
And the outcome of that has been that it is a major subdivision, but they are non-conforming lots, they can move closer to, um, conforming, but that doesn't mean they have to be six thousand square feet. They can be less than six thousand square feet, and they can have less than the fifty-foot of road frontage, but, but they have to conform to all other areas of the subdivision in site plan code.
Okay.
Is the pump sized at forty-nine houses for spare capacity? Or because you foresee potentially adding more houses? Or that some of these homeowners might produce extra sewage?
Well, there's a big factor of safety built into like the numbers. If you say it's done for thirty-nine, thirty-six, it's for thirty-six people using the most anyone ever uses, right? The extra, or there are, as, uh, as Herb said earlier, there's some lots around this that would not, that could be subdivided further, but would have no sewer. So the request from the city utilities folks was, well, that's just why we're at it, make it large enough to accommodate them so that they're not stuck, or they're not having to do their own pump later, right? And then they're doing their own individual pumps rather than tying in the one that already exists, so that's what we've agreed to do.
So I see, oh, God, this is, forty lots, right? Is that what we're talking about? On page?
Uh, yes, forty lots.
Have any other question?
I, I, I haven't bought a lot of easements in my, in my life, how bad is that?
Uh, well, it, it, sometimes not at all, but you, you can't, you know, compel someone to sell an easement. You know, I mean, if they don't want to sell it, they don't have to. And I think the city does have con- And I think the city does have condemnation powers, but it's unusual, same as the service store doesn't county, but it's unusual to apply in the situation, effectively if there is a viable alternative that doesn't involve going on, you know, condemning someone's land.
Who's maintaining the roads?
They'll be public.
They'll be public.
Public water, public roads, the gas, just the sewer is private.
Okay, thank you. And will the generator be periodically tested to make sure it still works?
They usually run on like a, a once-a-week test cycle for fifteen minutes. They're on auto dialers, so if there's ever a problem with either the pump or the, the generator, it calls somebody itself and says, yeah.
Typically, they have like a light, it makes noise when those things fail.
Oh, yeah, yeah, red lights will go off and they'll, yeah, you'll know. There's an element that, one of the, to your point, the point that was raised about, you know, if it spills over, right, where's it gotta go? One of the benefits of this is that we're not like on a well, where you could just run infinite amounts of water out. So if the system had its timer that told the city, eh, got a problem, you can cut the water off here and nobody can overflow. You got a little bit of protection, whereas if I'm on a private well and I have a pump, my pump fails and I keep running my water, it'll just keep on going. So there is an element that, because you, because we are on public water, there's a control on the intake side of the water usage, whereas you might not have that if you were just on a well.
And would you be putting in some sort of cutoff for the whole subdivision for that? Automatic, like remote cutoff? Or would that have to be like, they call in to the utility, they send someone out?
I think, I think the auto dialer would alert, it would send out like an alert and would go to the city utility folks and they'd be like, oh, we gotta cut the water off over here. It's, it, it's pretty common in developments that have these sort of things. Little unusual that you have like a, you know, the city water in the private sewer, but same mechanism.
I, I guess what I'm struggling with because I'm a spoiled city person, do people want this? This seems weird.
Well, I mean, people wanna live in the city, right? So some people are gonna wanna live in these houses. I, I think that most people who live there will probably never know it exists. You know, and, until they get some kind of bill.
Except they got this extra bill. Except there's no way to build this economically, so there's not gonna be any, I mean. And I'm paying however much extra a month, plus my toilet.
I think you're gonna get your HO, you're gonna see your house, your HOA dues, they're already figured out when you buy your house and you agree to pay that and you just pay it. And one day, something happens and the guys say, oh, we took five thousand bucks out of your account to pay, fix this and you just keep living your life.
Are there any other questions? Comments, discussion, anything else we wanna say from staff?
Mr. Shimp, shrimp, you have, Shimp, do you have any questions for us or any things that the, we should know about?
I think the fundamental issues are, you know, sound, smell, appearance, right? The rest of it's very technical, you know, I think that you can certainly steady up on and get into the weeds of pump design, but it's not very interesting. So I think that those are the things in our mind that we wanna be able to address and have in our report, how they're, you know, non-impactual.
Those are the day-to-day now concerns, but then there's also the security of?
Right.
The future and what happens to it with the HO, HOA.
And that's something we can work with the, the city staff. And I think, like I say, what I like about the way that the Nelson system does it is if you, you know, they break it down into little small areas, it's not like a big regional thing. It's that if you're in this one neighborhood in this street, you pay extra because you have an extra maintenance burden. So it's not carried over to everybody in the city, it's paid for by you uniquely. So I think it'd be worth talking about that, like if that's in the city, you know, ordinance, that's a problem. But let's say if that had to be done, is that just a thing that can be done like that or is there some kind of issue with that? I assume it can just be done by an act of like city council, but it might be worth looking into that to make sure that is true.
Mr. Athlete, would you all like to maybe have the utilities person here that reviews this in case we need to?
Certainly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Add that to your list. That way, cuz we're always sitting up here going, what do they say?
I'd like to know that utilities is working with the applicant during this whole design process so that the, the city knows and, and apparently that's already gonna be, that's set up. That's gonna happen anyway, but yes.
They've been proactive, they gave us a list, that here's our, our concerns and so we're basically addressing that list.
Have you tried looking and, or talking to any of these people to see if a, an easement is?
I, I haven't personally, I know the developers sent letters to all the neighbors down the hills, like seven properties, and offered them some amount of money for the easement, but I've, I've not been involved in that. So I, there's been an effort to reach out. That was one of the city utilities requirements, they said, prove to us that people won't do this. And I think there was an expectation that people probably aren't gonna want to, but nonetheless, there was a requirement to make good faith effort to do so.
So you haven't heard back from the people?
I don't think so, no. Well, I, I said, I know one person replied, like, no way, or something to that effect. But I haven't heard more details.
That's a negotiating stance.
It might be.
And you need all of them to?
Pump stations coming?
Yeah.
Uh, last question, cuz it was on Matt's list and I don't think anyone asked it. Uh, lighting, will that doghouse deal be lit? Except when, that everything's blowing out?
It would have a little like a, I don't know, light like you'd have at your door, right, a little. So if you went by there at night to check on it, you can see what you're doing. But it would be more like a yard light, a bollard kind of light than a, right? And it probably has like a, a little red light on the side of it, that if something happens, it will flash and so you see it.
And so the exterior of that doghouse structure, is the generator like entirely inside? Or are there panels on the outside that you would be checking? Or that light just be to the door and?
It's got a control panel on one side with, you know, gauges that say, oh, the pump's working, here's the percent runtime, blah, 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 blah. And then it's got, like, some just vents in it, so air can flow through the generator and keep it, you know, cool when it's running and everything. But yeah, it's, there's, it's pretty basic. It's kinda like a, like your breaker box on your house, it's like that.
What if the power goes out?
Uh, that's what the generator's for.
Okay.
It's gotten, we have the benefit of having the city gas here. So the generator is on the gas. So it's a pretty, pretty reliable source.
Do you have to put a security fence around it?
Not if it's in the ground. It'll have basically a? No, the generator, the generator will be in the little, in the little house. It'll have a, you know, a little lock on it, you know, just to keep it closed up, but it's, it's kinda in a structure.
That looks like. Don't you think?
Of course.
Well, I just think we've, since we're going the list out of things, we're gonna see. The utilities.
I'm gonna wanna see what, what it looks like if it was above-ground too. The actual pump that's up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Is that an option, that it might be above-ground?
It is not one that we really like. Um, I, I think we're gonna end up in the ground with the pumps. That's in the working out for utilities folks. If, if they tell us it has to be above-ground, then we'll bring you the structure of it above-ground. That is larger, that's more like a garden shed than a.
Who's garden shed?
The average one you see in Belmont, eight by ten.
Two-story garden shed.
Well, it's not like you're in a garden shed, no.
Or Belmont.
Or Belmont.
Not a two-story, no. It's pretty small.
Any else try to think of?
No.
No, that's helpful.
So to the public that's here, I guess we're gonna hear, hear this later and y'all are gonna meet with them tomorrow?
There's a neighborhood meeting tomorrow.
All right.
And then we will keep people posted as to when things are done.
Oh, I'm sure we're gonna hear if they don't like.
Gonna hear about it, yeah. And then, yeah, I imagine it'll be in February or March before the hearing.
Belmont's got our email address, I'm sure, we'll, we'll hear how this goes, so.
Belmont, this is Jeff.
I know, I said Belmont's got our email address, so I'm sure that they can get it too.
Oh, oh, oh.
No, no, no.
He was about to have us here for another thirty minutes.
No, no, no.
Thank you, Mr. Shimp.
Thank you all, and that ends the agenda for this evening, with the exception of a little conversation about the conference of plan.
We're done.
We're gonna meet with council Monday and then go from there. But right now, the work session on the eighteenth, which is next Tuesday, is gonna be on the CIP, CIP and?
CIP and Emmett Street Streetscape Project.
Emmett Street Streetscape.
And you're forcing me to miss another BAR meeting?
I did not schedule this.
I mean, you're physically.
The PTO wants to see me, I'm just saying.
I just say, hey, I enjoyed my last Tuesday off, I'm not gonna lie. The kids are like, wait, it's Tuesday, you're on?
Well, no, I agree.
I know. It's like, it's Tuesday, let's watch The Voice. I'm missing the finale, I don't know who's on. Somebody already won, I didn't get to vote in.
I just wanna say, um, thanks for the Shaw's for City School Systems for already calling that two-hour delay because, um, it's pretty late.
It's pretty late. So I will entertain a motion for adjournment until Jan, the second Tuesday in January.
So moved.
Damn.
Although we'll see you on January fifth.